Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, October 18th. Councilman Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, if you guys will bow with me, we'll say a prayer. Lord, we thank you, thank you for all the blessings that you give us in our lives and for the city, we thank you for the staff, police officers and firefighters, everybody who does what they do for us on a daily basis. Lord, we hope that you'll be with us tonight in the decisions that we make and be in our voices, and we thank you again, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The STARS program is intended to recognize employees who embody the city's standards for service excellence and exemplify the city's core service values. It is for those employees that go above and beyond their normal job duties in providing outstanding customer service, both internally and externally. I am proud to announce this month's winners of the STARS award is Lucas Stanley and Trent Farrell, both equipment operators for the street department. Mr. Joe Reeves, a longtime resident of Murfreesboro, called the street department to compliment Lucas and Trenton. Mr. Reeves said he was out trying to change a flat tire and he was struggling with the tire jack. Lucas and Trenton saw Mr. Reeves and stopped to help. Mr. Reeves said they were both professional and polite. He offered to pay them a little something for their help, and they told him they were just doing their job. Mr. Reeves said that it's nice to know that there are still nice people out there and that the city has two good ones. Thank you, Lucas and Trenton, for representing the city in a positive light.
Lucas. Is there anything that you wish to pull off and discuss?
Any questions, I'll move for approval.
Motion second, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have four meetings for minutes, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You now have ordinance 18055 to amend Chapter Two Administration, Section 276 to increase the Water Resources Board, this is second reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to new business and adopt Resolution 18R-31 authorizing development of an application for installation of small wireless facilities, aka small cell facilities, and designating small wireless facility fees for engineering. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is Resolution 18R-31, which authorizes application and fees for installing small wireless facilities or small cells in city right-of-way and city-owned property. Recently, the General Assembly passed the Competitive Wireless Broadband Investment Deployment and Safety Act of 2018. Highlights of this legislation are contained in the attached memorandum. The attached resolution authorizes the application fees and annual use fees consistent with the act. The city is also developing an ordinance in compliance with the provision of the act, and we also expect amendments to both the street specifications and the zoning ordinance. While the fees that we have proposed will not cover our expenses, we believe that we'll be able to absorb the work with current staff and don't expect to add any. The work is being primarily completed by a permits technician and inspector. With that, we recommend approval of the resolution, be happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Ives is here as well.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith or Mr. Ives?
If there aren't, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have a mandatory referral for the abandonment of a right-of-way along Agri Park Drive, and as we talk about abandonment, I think it also would be good to mention Mr. Blomley at the mic, that I believe there was a big ballgame between UT and you're a very big Auburn fan, so how did that turn out on Saturday?
Not well, Mayor McFarland.
Okay.
It was a very sad day for me.
All right.
I'm still in mourning a little bit, so y'all take it easy on me.
All right.
Well, thank you, Mayor McFarland, good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. Our next item tonight is for the abandonment of a small section of right-of-way along Agri Park Drive. Planning Commission took this up on October the 3rd. It's a turnout for a future public street, and you can see it if we can pull the map up. It's just a small turnout, it's in the orange color on the map before you, and contrary to what the map shows you, the turnout across Agri Park Drive was actually abandoned by Planning Commission and council back in 2015. When Agri Park Drive was constructed, it was envisioned that there would be a public street crossing going east-west, right there, at that point in Agri Park Drive. That never came to fruition. On the west side of the road, it was developed with the vintage at Blackman Apartment Complex. There was a smaller apartment complex approved by the Planning Commission called Rutherford Park Apartments adjacent to this turnout, and so staff recommended to the applicants, the developers, that they request the abandonment of that little turnout because there are elements that should be on private property, including the beginning of their access drive into their development, that should not be in public right-of-way, and we recommended to them that they square up that right-of-way line right there. Planning Commission held a public hearing on that matter on October the 3rd and unanimously recommended the abandonment of that little section of right-of-way, and staff recommends, or Planning Commission recommends, the approval of this abandonment with the following conditions. The applicant shall be required to submit the necessary documents to the legal department required to draft the quitclaim deed. The applicant shall be responsible for recording the quitclaim deed. The abandoned right-of-way shall be incorporated into the adjacent lot via a subdivision plat recorded at the Register of Deeds office, and four utility and slope easements shall be recorded to accommodate existing utilities, including but not limited to sanitary sewer, electric, and AT&amp;T. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley?
There are no questions, I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have annexation progress reports, and Mr. Blomley, I think you have someone you'd like to introduce?
I do have an introduction, Mayor McFarland, I appreciate the opportunity to do so. I'd like to introduce our newest planner to the city council, his name is Austin Cooper. Austin started with us in August. He just graduated earlier this year from Indiana University of Pennsylvania, I know that's confusing to me as well, with a degree in regional planning. We're very excited to have Austin, he's been doing a great job so far, he's been here a few months, and Ms. Kerr in our office has very graciously handed over annexation progress reports to him, which we're actually a little bit behind on, so without further ado, I'll let Mr. Austin Cooper.
Mr. Blomley, is now the time that we tell Ms. Kerr that since she turned over annexation reports, that we're giving her signage back?
You know, she's handling zoning enforcement right now, so as long as she's okay doing that, I am happy.
All right. Mr. Cooper, glad that you're with us.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Public Chapter 1101 of the 1998 General Assembly required that six months after the effective date of annexation and annually thereafter until services have been extended, according to such plan, a municipality must publish in a newspaper of general circulation progress support for the extension of services and any changes proposed therein. The law further requires that legislative body of the municipality hold a public hearing on such progress reports after publication and notice in the newspaper. The attached annexations have been effective for at least one year. The planning staff recommends the city council schedule a public hearing November 29th to consider the progress reports of the plan of services for the annexed areas. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to set a public hearing on November 29th? November 29th?
I'm not hearing any objections to that, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve, or make a motion to have a public hearing November 29th.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Cooper, glad you're here. All right, you have public hearings that need to be scheduled for, an list of items. Mr. Blomley, what dates are you thinking that we'd want to schedule these?
Mayor McFarland, if it pleases the council, we would recommend November 29th for these as well. All of these were handled in one Planning Commission meeting, and we feel that they can be handled at one city council meeting along with the progress report, public hearing that was just scheduled.
Okay, do we have a motion for November 29th?
So moved. Could, is there a possibility that we could remove item F and remove John Rice Boulevard from annexation? And personally, I just, I don't think there's a good reason for us to even consider it because it's not, all we're doing is providing services, and I'm gonna have a very difficult time explaining to somebody if we do road improvements on that road, why am I putting a sidewalk in the front yard of somebody who lives in the county when everybody in the city doesn't have one? And so I really struggle with that one.
Mr. Smotherman, I may have to defer to Mr. Ives, I think that what I am tasked with today is bringing forth the recommendations of the Planning Commission, and the recommendation of the Planning Commission was to include that. We can always eliminate that, vote to eliminate that, once we hold the public hearing on it, if that pleases the council.
That'll be fine, I'll bring it back up then, thank you.
Okay. Did we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Shacklet, and a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Blomley. We'll now move into the development agreements for the church streets property.
Mayor and council, we're happy to bring forward to council a couple of agreements to get underway, a very important development for downtown, one that has potential to change the complexion of downtown. We've entered in agreement with, previously you heard them referred to, I think, as Murfreesboro Investment Group, and I think now they're forming an LLC, One East College LLC. You've had the agreements for a couple of days, I think, had a chance to look at them. A real quick review on the purchase and sale agreement, the purchase price on that land, which encompasses the entire city block, bounded by college and, let's see, church, college, Lidle, and Spring Street, is, the purchase price on that is 1.8, and that's for the church property that we, the historic First United Church property, the small office building that's on the corner of church and college, and then the city's parking lot that completes that lot, or completes that block. Purchase price would be 1.8 million. Earnest money we deposited would be $100,000. They'll have, the One East College will have 180 days period in which to conduct studies for engineering, geotech, environmental, the standard development type of studies that they need to have to move forward, and then closing will occur after that period of time. The agreement also includes, and is a bit unique in a lot of agreements, a repurchase option on the part of the city if construction doesn't begin within 210 days of the closing date. You also have a mixed-use development agreement, and that defines the project itself, so the project will include retail, commercial, residential. Part of the commercial, or part of the development will be a hotel, which right now is projected to be 120 rooms, major branded hotel, and there will be sufficient parking for both the development itself and the parking is required to be public so that during periods of time when some of the parking that's not reserved for elements that are developed that need to be, have reserved parking, such as a residential hotel, will be available for public use. And also with the development agreement is a tax incentive financing program that we'll put into place related to that to assist with public infrastructure and some of the parking that will be developed, that'll be exclusive to this property and the taxes that will be created on this property. That program, though, however, needs still to go to the IDB, will continue to negotiate the Economic Impact Plan, and then that will go to the Industrial Development Board for approval, and then come to both the county and city council for approval before that goes into effect. Mr. Jeff Reed, who is council for the group, is here, and some of his principals, I believe, are here, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or Mr. Reed, or perhaps his principals would, could answer that as well.
I don't have a lot to say, I'll just add that the development group is very excited to get ready, get started with the project. We expect to do a very Class A project for downtown, keep the historic bell tower, keep the sanctuary with respect to the church. We're gonna have a hotel component, commercial retail office space as well. We expect to blend it with respect to what Mercer has downtown architecturally as well, so very excited about doing the project and getting started with it.
Great, with that, if you have any questions, please let me know. I will say on the agreements themselves, you have in front of you close to final versions, we're still going through some legal reviews, there'll be some changes, not unusual for documents of this type. Most of the changes are technical, I can review those, but they really relate to some of the legal remedies that are outlined in the documents, and also in aligning the documents with the Economic Impact Plan that still is yet to be developed. And, you know, quite frankly, as we go along, and as the development goes along and it gets planned, we will probably be back with amendments to the development agreement, that's just standard of the development that's this complex.
I know we're all excited to get to this point, so something I think that we've talked about for a long time, and we're excited to see what this will do to the downtown, so we're really glad and appreciative of the work that not only you all have put into this, but all the staff has put into this. I wish I could make a motion.
Subject to the review of legal, I would make a motion that we approve the agreement.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Congratulations, look forward to working with y'all. Thank you. All right, we now have a step system approval on John Bragg Highway, Marshall Lines Elliott Water Resources. Mr. Core.
Mayor, city council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I'm here to request your approval to serve approximately 265 acres east of Rutherford Boulevard and south of John Bragg Highway through sewer service through a step system, a septic tank effluent pump system. Typically, these requests come to you as part of the annexation of property when sewer, sanitary sewer, conventional sanitary sewer is not deemed viable. This is a little bit of an exception because this area has already been annexed, it has been annexed several years ago. During that annexation process, we said the best means to serve this with sewer would be a decentralized step system, but per your request, wanted to come before you and let you know about it and ask for your approval, so I do have a little bit of an exhibit here just to orient you with where we're at. This is the area, it's outlined in the magenta, it's about 265 acres, those are the various zoning types. I'm not gonna go into, that's the zoning issue and the yield of those. What I want to explain to you is that this area will really be limited through the assimilative capacity or the capacity of the soil system in the steps tanks. So this is, this is a rendering, we met with Bill Huddleston and Larry Elliott a couple of days ago, and so this, you see these light green areas being reserved, and they have to be reserved because those are gonna be your drip fields for your step system. So you kind of overlay the soils, and you can see that they're not gonna get the full density maybe that they would typically get through conventional sewer because you're gonna have to reserve so much green space for the drip system. So they're stating that they think they can get approximately 1,600 bedrooms out here, that equates to about 100 two-bedroom apartment complexes and 459 three-bedroom lots, and they're also looking at four commercial lots to front John Bragg Highway. That's all, of course, subject to planning and engineering approval. The point I'm bringing to you today is that there will be significant amount of green space reserved for the drip fields, so we would request your approval to serve this area through a decentralized step system. And this has been before the Water Resources Board as well.
Mr. Core, I think part of the reason, if I remember right, when these first came up and we kind of had the agreement to, hey, when these come up, we should talk through it.
Right.
We have two or three now?
We have one under construction, and we've approved two. We've approved one other, so there's two in the, one in the queue, one's being built.
Is there anything that we should know before we keep approving? I mean, I think that's kind of the purpose of...
We, CUD has been a trailblazer in this decentralized step arena, they've had them in the ground for 20 years. We went through a very extensive due diligence process in interviewing them, talking with their maintenance folks. We had multiple team meetings between our operation and maintenance and their operation and maintenance to make sure that we had the same pumps, we had the same materials, the same controls, the same telemetry, cellular alarm systems, so that we were almost interchangeable with CUD. So there's been, if there'd been any problems, CUD would have experienced them long ago. So as far as my group, as far as we see, we see it as an opportunity, and we knew this area would have to be decentralized, or served through a decentralized system. When we said that through the plan of services several years ago, we thought it may be served through CUD. It was before we got into the step system business. Now that we're in that business, we're requesting that we would serve it.
And CUD started in the step system.
It's over 20 years, it's probably back in the late 90s.
Yeah.
Mid, late 90s. They're actually asked to speak about step systems all over the country because of their expertise in that field.
Whenever you think you're ready, I mean, I don't know what the typical protocol is as far as bringing this kind of stuff to council if you need to, or if you don't need to, but, you know, whenever you feel that you don't need to, we probably adhere to your experience and expertise on that and...
Right. Like I said, 99 times out of 100, it's gonna be going through, and the plan of services will be explained to you through the annexation process. This was just a little bit of a unique situation in the fact that it's already been annexed, so I don't expect to be up here talking about step systems very much with y'all.
Gotcha. I'll move for approval, if y'all are ready.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright, if you'll please call the roll.
Thank you.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Core.
Thank you.
We have a consulting contract with HUB International for review of city job description. Ms. Russell.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm requesting our current benefit consultant, Hub International, review, consolidate, and rewrite approximately 147 full-time jobs for the non-exempt job descriptions across the workforce. City currently has 243 unique job descriptions for approximately 1,029 employees. The job descriptions range anywhere from two to eight pages in length. In 2016, a review and consolidation of job descriptions was to be completed by the MAG Advisory Group. That project, however, failed to cover the full scope of the city's needs, which included narrowing job titles and groups, rewriting job descriptions based on essential functions, physical abilities, education, and then confirming the FLSA designation. The Human Resources Department will review and rewrite 96 existing exempt positions. However, we're requesting that Hub International provide complete job descriptions for the 147 non-exempt positions. The city did receive two quotes for the project. One quote was from Mercer at approximately $105,000. The other quote came from Hub International at approximately $43,000, and the project will be funded through the class and compensation fund balance. There is a statement of work attached, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Russell?
What's the timeframe for completion of this?
They believe that they'll be done by the end of the year.
Wow.
No further questions?
Please. No further questions, I'm moved to approve.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, thank you, Ms. Russell. We now have an appointment, there's a representative of the school board that's always on the Cable TV Commission by ordinance, so Mr. Phil Keen rolled off on this last election, and so recommending Ms. Roseanne Barton to be on the Cable TV Commission.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Also, for the record, Ms. Michado wanted me to have the council appointments or where everyone's serving on board and commission, so we have that to enter into the record. Any licensing?
No, sir.
Okay. Any statements that need to be paid?
No, sir.
Okay. Old business, I only have, other business, I only have one thing, and this is more of a, just an update. There's been some discussion, we reached out to the battlefield on Monday and had some really good discussion about realigning the new Northfield extension with the battlefield entrance. That originally was not an option, but we've had some pretty productive conversations over the last three days, even to the point where we'll email a proposal out tonight where there will be a land swap... where there will be a land swap, where they'll give us roughly four acres, and we're gonna give them some land that's over by Fort Rosenkrantz. So, you know, you never say never, but we're on a pretty quick timeline, and hopefully the Battlefield, and as it goes up, the line will, will work, we'll be able to work together.
Does that require federal approval too?
There's a...
Congress.
Yeah, a pretty detailed step. They think that going through this process, if it's approved in the region, that it may not have to have federal approval, congressional approval.
Congressional.
But we've come up with a couple of ideas that we think will help get the process moving along. Maybe if it has to have that approval, that there's some other options that we could do to be able to let us do the work that we need to do. But it would be a win-win if we get the approvals from the Battlefield.
It's definitely a win-win, and of course, we're just trading inch for inch, so it's not like we're doing away with any of the Battlefield, we're going to lose any of the Battlefield, so it sounds like a really good progress report there.
We'll, as soon as we send the proposal out, we'll send that to all the council members so you'll have an idea of what has been sent, but it looks like it's promising. All right, any other business?
Mayor, you mentioned the board appointments earlier, and I know we have basically divided the urban environmental department into recreation and street department, so I think my suggestion would be, should I make a motion? My point is, I would like for us to dissolve the urban environmental board.
Let me check. I think urban environmental, maybe David knows, it might be created by ordinance, and if it is, we'll bring back an ordinance that you need to act.
I'm not certain how it was created. I think you may be right. I think it may be by ordinance, but...
I'm pretty sure it's by ordinance, so let us bring back an ordinance and then make a motion on that.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Any other business?[1774.01]